Good evening, I'd like to call the regular monthly meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to slow down a bit over the summer, though our minds and energies are already directed to the next school year. We pray a special prayer of thanksgiving for those who worked in our summer programs and who are continuing to do their part to get us ready for the coming year. We are grateful for their dedication. We pray also for those in our family who are traveling on vacation that they might experience quality time with family and friends and return safely to us in August. These things we ask in your name.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Votche.
Mrs. Acevedo is not with us, Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Disar?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine?
Here.
Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Before we go on to the agenda items, we have a point of privilege. Mr. England?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Disar. What I want to just bring up is this past weekend went to the play, to The Little Mermaid. I tell you what, that was a fantastic program. I tell you what, if you want to see top-notch acting and performance by all the students and the techs behind the scenes, this is amazing. So, anybody out there, they're going to have some more scheduled for this week. If anybody can make it, please make it because you're going to be missing something if you don't go. Thank you.
And ditto to that, Mr. England, I was able to attend also, and it was wonderful. I think they outdid themselves on this, on The Little Mermaid. I mean, the students, the musicians, the techs, they all did an incredible job. It was just very, very entertaining, and I heard that Sunday's performance was sold out, so if you do want to attend, go ahead and make your, get your tickets on the website, St. Bernard Parish School Board dot org, and go to the cultural arts center of The Little Mermaid. Ms. Votche, you have something to add to that?
That's what I was going to say, that we are, performances are Thursday, Friday, and Saturday nights at 7:00 PM, and again, a Sunday matinee at two. You can go on to our website, as Ms. Disar has said, and purchase tickets through the website, and there are still some available for some of those performances. But it was magnificent production, the sets, the costumes, the acting was just second to none. So if you're looking for a nice night out or afternoon with your children and family members, this is an absolutely great production to see.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Uh, Dr. Kraft?
Oh, yeah, it was a tremendous production, and when you think of so many high school students performing, they rank right up there with any adult play or performance, anywhere. So you always come away with pride in seeing our students perform that well. So accolades to them and the people that work behind the scenes there, it's just tremendous. So we were fortunate to say we took a group of Rotarians there, and all of them, they gave it accolades, and so hopefully I'll take some grandchildren this next weekend to see it, so I think they will enjoy it thoroughly. Express my, expressly, my little precious princess, I know she would like it. Yes, she's seven now. So that's great. I know if you missed it, you need to make sure to get tickets for this next weekend. And any of you out there in the television audience, you need to get it and come see it. That'll build pride in St. Bernard Parish schools. We apologize to no one for the performance and the results that we get here in St. Bernard Parish. So we were pleased with this, and they make the St. Bernard Parish School Board proud. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Anyone else? Okay, all right, and before we go on to the next item, I wanted to, I would like to call Ms. Bev Larson up. Is she in the audience?
I think she's still upstairs.
She's still, okay.
She'll be down a little bit later.
I'll call, we'll call her up then when she comes down. Okay, next item on the agenda then, we'll go to the first item, the community concerns. Has anyone signed up? Ms. Benasak?
No one has signed up.
Okay, thank you. All right, next item is the recognition of Chalmette High School as an Advanced Placement Program of Distinction. Okay, and with us tonight, we have a wonderful principal of Chalmette High School, Mr. Warner, assistant principal, wonderful assistant principals, Ms. Munn, and another assistant principal, Ms. Watson. Thank you for being here tonight. We're so happy to see you, and we know you work so very hard, and this was quite an honor, and I'm going to have Ms. Votche explain how this honor has been awarded.
Well, last week, the Board of Elementary and Secondary Education had a joint meeting with the Board of Regions, the board which governs the colleges and universities in the state, and the Advanced Placement Program made some special awards to a very few schools and school systems to recognize them as an Advanced Placement Program of Distinction. And for those people who don't really realize what advanced placement means, it's while students are still in high school, they're taking courses of, I guess you would say, higher rigor, which are courses similar to what they would be taking at the college level, and there's a national exam associated with each one of the courses, and if the students score high enough on that national exam, then they can be awarded college credit, anywhere from three to five credit hours per course. And many of our students earn many, many college credits by taking these courses, and we have been increasing the participation in the program for quite a few years, and not only with the increased participation, but what we've been recognized for are the increased number of students and the increased percentage of students who are scoring, it's on a scale of one to five, and you have to score three or higher to earn any type of college credit. So we were one of the school systems recognized for that increase in the percentage of students who are scoring at exceptionally high levels to actually earn the college credit. And I really would like either Mr. Warner, Ms. Munn, or Ms. Watson, and I really have to say, Ms. Watson, I think, has been instrumental and the mover and shaker behind that increase in participation and scheduling of the courses and getting the kids excited about them. So maybe, maybe she would like to speak a little bit about the program itself.
Yeah, absolutely. So when students come for scheduling, we look at a few components to decide whether or not that student has the potential to do well on those AP exams. So we look at their prior test scores, you know, grades in other classes, but really, do you want to do what it takes to be successful in this college-level course? And we really feel like the more kids who take these courses, the more chance that they get to know what is college really like before they actually go to college. So one of the, not only have we increased the number of students taking those exams, you would think with the increase of students, the increase, it would actually decrease the number of students scoring three or higher, right? The more kids taking it, less students are really of the caliber to do well, and it really says a lot for our teachers who teach those classes, that they're actually able to get those kids to score the three or better, because we're rising each year, which is amazing. Also, one of the, I don't know if Ms. Votche mentioned it, but one of the reasons we were an AP School of Distinction is actually because of the number of minority students taking those AP exams. So we're really proud of it. Forty percent of our students last year who took AP exams were of minorities. The year before, we were at a third, and that's kind of been how it's been the last couple of years. So that's, you know, a great testament to the fact that we're not excluding any student who's interested in taking those exams. They want to take the class, they want to prepare for college, and then those teachers do an amazing job at actually getting those students to score the score that they need. So, absolutely amazing. Four out of seven of our AP exams are actually higher than the state average. So, that's awesome. So, I mean, not only-
And that's all public and private schools, it's not just public schools within the state?
Exactly, so, mm-hmm. We also have some areas, for instance, psychology, who's right up there with the national average, and last year, over half of those students who took psychology AP scored the three or better on the AP exams. We have human geography, which is open to ninth graders, and the last couple of years, we basically had to cap it off at ninety students, because we only have one teacher teaching it, three classes a day, so that's ninety students, and, you know, almost half of those students are scoring the three or better. So they're coming in wanting to explore the AP classes, and so many of those students, they realize the struggle, because he's hard on them. They, they actually get the assignment in December when they go to Christmas break, and they have an actual Christmas break assignment that's due the first day of class, and not only are they meeting the expectations, they're exceeding the expectations. That teacher was, you know, absolutely excited about the kids he had in the class and their performance on the test and in the class. And so not only are they taking those classes, but they're continuing to take AP classes throughout their high school year. So they're not just dropping out when they see how hard it is, they really do understand the importance of preparing themselves for their college and their future, because every one of those classes requires so much of the kids. They learn time management, they learn, they, you know, I guess beef up their writing skills and their comprehension and their critical thinking. So all of our students who participate in those classes really do get so much out of it, more than just the content area, they really get those skills that's going to prepare them for their future.
And I think, you know, when we went up there, and it happened to be the day of the major storm, and so I was already in Baton Rouge for that joint meeting, and we didn't want them on the road, because we didn't know what was happening, so I was able to accept these on their behalf, and it's a shame that they could not have made it, because it was a very nice function, but, you know, people, I think, I think we're one of the, I think we're the only district that received two of them, two awards, in two different categories for it, to make the overall program of distinction. I think along with that, the Advanced Placement Program, and I know that we're not here to speak anything more about, except for that, but along with that, the dual enrollment and then the CLEP, which is the college-level exam, what does the CLEP stand for? College Level Examination Program, something like that, where they're taking other courses, and if they pass that nationally-recognized examination, they're also able to get credit for those courses. Then we have the actual dual enrollment courses that we have with Nunez. So there are three different ways that students can earn college credit while they're in high school, and we've got, I think, over half the class, the graduating class this year, who earn college credit, and many of them with many, 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 many hours of credit. That helps parents from a financial standpoint, which is, which is wonderful, gives the kids a little head start as they walk onto a college campus, and it also gives the parents a little relief that hopefully, if they're staying in Louisiana, they're earning tops, but they're also starting out ahead of the game, so that they can complete the entire college degree within that four-year period. So I think, you know, at Chalmette High School, they're doing such incredible work, and this has been a multi-year process to build that program and really to prepare teachers because, and train teachers in that delivery, because we as high school teachers may have a little bit different focus than you would have as a college teacher. So that content, we're all teachers, but the content that they're looking at and how they have to push the kids and to develop those skills and realize the rigor of a college class is so beneficial. So even if the student does not necessarily earn the score recognized nationally to get the credit, the experience of going through the course itself at that particular level helps prepare them for the rigors of a college course on campus, so.
Absolutely, and I just, you know, I don't want to downplay that this is really an achievement of the teachers as well, like Ms. Votche said. I mean, those seven teachers worked so hard in making sure that their class is really up to the level that those students, if they really, truly give it their all, they will be able to score that three or better. So it really is a testament to, you know, how awesome of, you know, teachers that we do have at Chalmette High School, and any student can come to Chalmette High School and be prepared instead in college classes with students who have paid a whole lot more for, you know, their high school education, but really be at the same level. So, you know, it's something to be proud of, for sure.
Okay, Dr. Kraft?
Thank you. Bring it down to a personal level, my grandson Jonathan attended Chalmette High School for his entire high school experiences, and we're certainly pleased with the outcome there. It's sort of like a family, family there, even though Ms. Goday didn't teach him a class, she, she took an interest in Jonathan. And Jonathan had thirty-six Advanced Placement units, so, thirty-six, so he started up in his sophomore year at LSU. Also, Jonathan got a ten-year scholarship to achieve, if he hung in with the program for that ten years, he'd have a, he'd have a PhD in biological engineering and also a medical doctor degree. Well, he was one of ten that was selected to participate in this ten-year program, and at this point, the nine of them had dropped out, but Jonathan from Chalmette High School is still hanging in there and doing well. In fact, this, this spring, he took his NCAT, which is to get you into the doctoral program, so at nineteen, he passed that. So he's applying to the LSU Medical School to start that medical doctor program, and of course, he'll, he'll have that PhD in biological engineering, he's finished, I think, almost all those courses. So accolades to Chalmette High School here in St. Bernard Parish, so we want everybody outside of St. Bernard to turn green with envy, because hey, they have a reason to be, because we're the greatest. Thank you very much.
Well, Dr. Kryov, congratulations to you and your grandson, who's a Chalmette High graduate.
Yeah, we're proud of him. He went to Chalmette High, that's where he got his start, that's where he got his motivation. Otherwise, he wouldn't have been where he is today.
That's right. Well, on behalf of the board, we want to commend all of you, Ms. Watson, Ms. Munn, Mr. Warner, all the teachers at Chalmette High, who put forth such an effort to, to teach these Advanced Placement courses. It, you know, it's a lot of extra work for them and motivation to, for their students, and our students are definitely academically challenged and/or succeeding at these Advanced Placement courses. As Ms. Votche said, you know, more than half of our graduating class had, so that's of four hundred and twenty, out of four hundred and twenty-five students, more than half, so over two hundred students started, got out of high school with college credits, and, you know, as Ms. Votche said, that's, that's such a savings to parents and also a great start for our students to have them have those, those college credits and to be prepared to, to continue on to further study. So we want to commend you for all of your hard work and your diligence, and we want to, at this time, give you this wonderful award. It says, "College Board Award, Chalmette High School with the 2016 Louisiana Advanced Placement of Distinction for Advanced Placement Exam Performance." Thank you. Congratulations.
You want to get a picture? You want to get a picture?
Yeah, that would be great. I don't think they saw that, I think they saw that, right? You didn't see that? That was the breakdown. Congratulations, Ms. Warner.
Congratulations.
Why don't we come up? Just say we'll take a brief, yeah.
We're going to take a brief recess for a picture.
Yeah. Thank you. 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 If, if I may?
Yes.
I like to say that I cut my teeth on the old Sebastian Roy School in White Clasky. My mom was a teacher in St. Bernard for twenty-eight years, and I don't ever recall not being a part of a school somewhere, because she would let me go to her classroom occasionally and, and to the Christmas parties and things like that. And then I was in first grade at the old St. Bernard High School, which was Beauregard, in the courthouse, in fact, moved from there to Raleigh, and then to Trist, and then to Andrew Jackson, was only gone three years, and then came back and started my teaching career at Andrew Jackson, and eventually moved into central office. It's been a wonderful forty-four years, the associations, the friendships, the family that has formed as a result of my being part of the school system will always be there, and so many of you are part of that and just have shaped my life. I've grown up here, and grown up with a lot of you and a lot of other people that are still in the system. I just want to take the opportunity first to thank Doris for letting me serve as her assistant over the past thirteen years. The board is very fortunate to have someone of her integrity and intellect making decisions for the children of St. Bernard. I am convinced, after having served on state committees throughout the past many years and working with people at the State Department over that time, that there is no finer superintendent. Well, with the exception of maybe one. It's just a matter of time, Dr. Lewis, just a matter of time. You've got to have a certain number of years in first. Yeah, in the state of Louisiana, so I do want to thank her for her confidence in me to be her assistant, and to thank the board. I've said over and over again that I don't think I was necessarily the most intelligent or the most talented person around. A lot of my career opportunities have been through divine intervention, I think, and I praise God for that. But also, I have to thank the board for having the confidence in me and allowing me to do the things that we all wanted to see happen for the children in St. Bernard. It will always be a part of me, and I'll always be looking in on the board meetings and reading the- We love you, Bev, and thank you for everything and happy retirement.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
It's been...
Thank you so much, Bev.
It's been...
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, Lord.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Oh, gosh.
Happy retirement.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If I may?
Yes.
I like to say that I cut my teeth on the old Sebastian Roy School in White Claskey. My mom was a teacher in St. Bernard for 28 years. And I don't ever recall not being a part of a school somewhere because she would let me go to her classroom occasionally and to the Christmas parties and things like that. And then I was in first grade at the old St. Bernard High School, which was Beauregard, in the courthouse, in fact. Moved from there to Raleigh and then to Trist and then to Andrew Jackson. Was only gone three years and then came back and started my teaching career at Andrew Jackson and eventually moved into Central Office. It's been a wonderful 44 years. The associations, the friendships, the family that has formed as a result of my being part of the school system will always be there. And so many of you are part of that and just have shaped my life. I've grown up here and grown up with a lot of you and a lot of other people that are still in the system. I just want to take the opportunity first to thank Doris for letting me serve as her assistant over the past 13 years. The board is very fortunate to have someone of her integrity and intellect making decisions for the children of St. Bernard. I am convinced, after having served on state committees throughout the past many years and working with people at the State Department over that time, that there is no finer superintendent. Well, with the exception of maybe one.
Irish.
It's just a matter of time, Dr. Lewis. Just a matter of time.
You've got to have a certain number of years in first grade.
Yeah, in the state of Louisiana. So I do want to thank her for her confidence in me to be her assistant and to thank the board. I've said over and over again that I don't think I was necessarily the most intelligent or the most talented person around. A lot of my career opportunities have been through divine intervention, I think, and I praise God for that. But also, I have to thank the board for having the confidence in me and allowing me to do the things that we all wanted to see happen for the children in St. Bernard. It will always be a part of me and I'll always be looking in on the board meetings and reading the minutes in The Voice and checking to see what's happening with this one and that one because I know that over time, things have to change. But we have an awful, awful large number of talented young people who stand in the wings, ready to pick up whatever challenges await them on behalf of the children. So I thank you for those opportunities and I will be around. I live here. It was never a question after the storm of an if we come back, but when we come back. I've lived here for 64 of my 65 years and we're not going anywhere anytime soon. So thank you again. Thank you for the tribute and we'll see you in Winn-Dixie. Thank you.
Wait, Bev, you're not getting away that easy. I was going...
Okay, Ms. Votche.
You know, we've, I don't even know what to say anymore because we've been through so many different things, you know, with our banquet and the different events that we've had. You know, Bev says she's not the most intelligent or talented person around. Well, I beg to differ. I mean, that's, she's one of the most exceptionally talented people that I have ever come across. You know, back in, I know she was in the Central Office back in 82, was it? 82 she came in and worked as an administrative assistant or whatever and different things within the school system. But then in 1988, you know, at the same school board meeting, she was appointed as supervisor personnel and I was appointed to run the finances for the school system on that same night. And that was back in 1988. And we have kind of grown up together within the school system in different jobs, became very close friends. Bev's daughter, who's, we, is now a teacher, I guess you can say she's 28 now because Bev just said that today. I remember when we were here and she was, Bev was pregnant for Jenny at that time. And we've had that close relationship all of those years. And I think sometimes we say she took care of all the people initially. I took care of all the money. So together, we really ran the school system. And that didn't change when I had the opportunity and was blessed to be named superintendent in 2004. And I talked to Bev. I said, "Please, you know, get on this ride with me." And so from that point on, we've just pretty much been a team. And shortly thereafter, the very next year, when Katrina hit, we looked at each other and said, "Oh, God, now what do we do?" And together, we have worked these past 12 years, I think. And with, you know, the guidance of this board, the two of us, we've been able to do some great things, and all of us, in putting the schools back together, but always remembering what comes first. And the kids in the parish, as the school system has grown and the community has come back. And we're standing tonight recognizing our high school as an Advanced Placement Program of Distinction. And who would have ever thought? And talking about the play, The Little Mermaid, in probably what is the finest performing arts theater that any high school anywhere in this country has. And looking at the facilities we've put together, but most important, the programs within the schools. And having done that as a school family and community. So Bev, while she's officially retiring and she says she's going to be reading about us in The Voice, she's not going to be reading about us in The Voice, so I'm going to be talking to her just as often. And she's going to have tremendous input still in what is happening because that's just the way it is. So there's been no finer person coming through this school system. As we all know, in Bev Larson, and I got teary-eyed at the banquet, you choked up today. I'm starting it now, so I'm stopping at this point. But we all know and love her and we know that she's going to be missed on a daily basis. But she lives right around the corner practically and she will be here whenever we need her. That I do know. So, thank you.
Dr. Craft?
Yeah, thank you, Madam President. You've heard a great deal of positives about Bev. And I've talked with people around the state from time to time. They'd say, "Ms. Larson's part of your school system." And I'd say, "That's right. She's a great asset." So we appreciate all that she does. So she's, as she said, she started in a young age, being bonded and nurtured through the St. Bernard Parish school system. And that's very important. But she's touched so many lives and you heard her say that it might have been divine intervention. But I'll share with something that song, and I'm quite sure you remember that, Josh Corman, "He Raised Me Up."
Yeah.
On my bucket list, and we have a pastor that left of her church, last Sunday was the last presentation that she preached a sermon. And I'd asked her a few weeks ago, I said, "On my bucket list, it's for you to sing." Because I'd heard from prior assignments that she had had. She's just been here a year before she's moving to another assignment. And I said, "For the voice like yours, I wish you would sing this song, 'He Raised Me Up.'" And in that song is some words, "He raised me up to be more than I can be." And that's divine intervention. And that's extremely important. And we appreciate your faith in God. You depicted that as you lived a day-to-day basis. And on a latter moment, her mother, Mrs. Seer, taught my girls piano. And of course, I remember Tammy. And Tammy didn't like to practice the piano lesson. She had more important things to do. So she had tell whoever was dropping her off her list, "I got to go by and get Ms. Seer a snowball." And they would enjoy their snowballs and talk about, talk about the shows on TV, I think. I forget which ones, the ones that came on during the day. And so Tammy loved her dearly, as we all have, Ms. Seer. And we will miss you, Ms. Larson, because you've made a positive impact on so many people that it's innumerable the number that you have touched. And we appreciate you being a part of the St. Bernard Parish school system. So God bless you as you move forward.
Anyone else? Okay. Thank you, Bev.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda is a motion to incorporate the report of the Gene General Committee meeting into the minutes of the Gene Regular Monthly Meeting.
So moved.
Motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the following minutes. Minutes of the April 25, 2017, regular monthly meeting is published on June 16, 2017. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? There being none, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next is the approval of the minutes of May 3, 2017, special meeting is published on June 23. Motion by Mr. England, seconded by Dr. Craft. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next is the approval of minutes of the May 9, 2017, special meeting is published on June 23, 2017. There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, is there a second? Second by Mr. Long. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item, personnel changes for the month of June.
I'm subbing for Mr. Granberry this evening. If anyone has any questions, you can see highlighted in yellow, the changes from the committee meeting of two weeks ago. So he's been very, very busy staffing schools for this coming year.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay. Well, we'll go to the next item. Thank you, Ms. Votche. Motion to approve the Head Start request for expenditure of COLA increase. There was a recommendation...
So moved.
From the committee. There's a motion by Dr. Lewis, seconded by Mr. Gaines. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for the official journal. There was a recommendation by the committee. There's a motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. Campbell. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you. Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for vehicle painting and body repairs.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Long, is there a second? Second by Mr. Gaines. This was a recommendation by the committee. No discussion, please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for gasoline, diesel, lubricating oil, transmission fluid, and antifreeze. There's a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Mr. England. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a motion to approve the administration's recommendation for paper, cleaning, and custodial supplies. There was a recommendation by the committee. Is there a motion on the floor at this time? Motion by Ms. Lemoine, seconded by Mr. Warner. Any discussion? Please cast your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Next item is a notice of a public hearing. Notice is hereby given that at its meeting to be held on Tuesday, August 22, 2017, at 6:00 PM at the school board office, 200 East St. Bernard Highway, Chalamet, Louisiana, the parish, school board of the parish of St. Bernard, State of Louisiana, plans to consider adopting a resolution ordering and calling an election to be held within school district number one to authorize the renewal and continuation of ad valorem taxes. There's a, we need a motion on that? Like joint acclamation? All in favor of joint acclamation signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item? Yes, Dr. Craft?
If Madam Superintendent would tell us about the good news relative to the millage for operations and the paid-off millages for the schools that we have within St. Bernard Parish, we can't say that enough.
Okay. What we're looking to do is to renew the operational millages.
That's not a new...
Though, none of this would be anything new. It's just the current millages that we have an effect for salaries, benefits, and the general operation of the school system. So that's up for their normal 10-year renewal. So that's what we're calling. And what you're referring to, Dr. Craft, is that we were very fortunate that the citizens of St. Bernard, last year, or earlier this year, or last year, approved a millage, an operational millage to replace a debt service millage, just to swap out a rededication so that we can maintain the facilities that we have built. And the good news is we were able to do that and ask the taxpayers to approve a maintenance millage in place of debt service, which means we are now debt-free in the school system, that we own all, the people of St. Bernard own all of the facilities, free and clear, that there is no, I guess what you could say, mortgage on them, no bonds outstanding on them. So because we are debt-free, we can operate without paying interest on anything. And those operational millages were rededicated for the maintenance of the school, the school facilities, so that that plan the board always had in effect, that once the debt service millage rolled off, for that rededication to come on so that we would never have to go to the people to maintain the buildings that we bought and we were, or that we have built over these years. And that we've been able to do that at absolutely no cost to the taxpayers and not to increase the taxes in any way to maintain the building. So that planning by the school board members and the administration together has allowed that to happen so that we do not owe anything on it and we had the plan all along to maintain the facilities that we built.
Thank you, Superintendent Votche. And what I would say again, some school systems would have, they'd turn green with envy because so many of them have high millages to support what they built in the new schools. So we're really, really fortunate. And I believe this is correct, if my numbers are so, that all we have is for the basic operation of the school system, 41 mills.
Around that.
Around 41 mills. So again, we are extremely pleased with this one fact because we're doing it for less in St. Bernard Parish and we do not have to go to the taxpayers for them to pay more property taxes to help maintain the schools. So this will last for probably a decade or so. And the only thing that would be seen in the foreseeable future, if the population increases enough that we'd have to build a new school, we'd have to, we'd have to go to the taxpayers to help pay for that. But that's not anything on the near horizon for the St. Bernard School Board. So thank you, Superintendent Votche, for your leadership during these years that you've been here. You've got us in great financial condition, you and Prof. David, and we appreciate you what you've done. So thank you very much. Accolades to you.
And like you said, Dr. Craft, the facilities that we have built, especially this last one, the Numero Elementary, which will open in August, we have sufficient capacity in all of our buildings that there's no reason in the foreseeable future to see that we would need another facility. So unless we have a major expansion in population, we feel that we are very, in very, very good shape for the coming years.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Mr. Warner?
Yeah, I just wanted to, if I could, borrow the words of another famous Chalamet High graduate, Ronnie Lamarck, who say that the citizens of St. Bernard Parish are definitely getting their bang for their buck for the taxes that they pay for the school system out here at St. Bernard Parish. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Okay, anyone else? Okay. Next item, or items to be placed on the agenda of the next committee meeting. Dr. Craft?
Yes, I'd like to, the Louisiana School Boards Association has secured a contract with a group that will make bids on school supplies and various other things. And of course, there's been enabling legislation by the Louisiana Senate and the House and signed by the governor for this purpose. So it's free to become a member of it. And then if it's less than the state bid price or less than what you can go out and get a proposal on, then we could utilize that buying power of the Louisiana School Boards Association through their connection. So we need to look at maybe a resolution because it won't cost anything. And it's up to us, if we can save money, fine. If not, then we forego that. So I'd like to put that on the agenda, Superintendent Votche.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Craft. Okay, anyone else for items to be placed on the agenda? Okay, and of course, we have before the next committee meeting. All righty, Superintendent's recommendations. Ms. Votche?
I think we've covered everything this evening, talked about all the performances that we're having this summer and the programs that we have for our students. Our administrators are going to be coming back and, well, they're here, they're still here. But in two weeks, we've got our week-long in-service with test results and planning for this coming school year. So we're right in the middle of planning for the opening of the new school year. So we've never stopped. Our teachers are doing professional development this summer. So really, summer is shorter and shorter and the planning process consumes the entire time. So it's exciting, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Votche. Okay. Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Dr. Craft. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.
And then if it's less than the state bid price or less than what you can go out and get a proposal on, then we could utilize that buying power of the Louisiana School Boards Association through their connection. So we need to look at maybe a resolution because it won't cost anything and it is up to us. If we can save money, fine. If not, then we forego that. So I'd like to put that on the agenda. Superintendent Vouchet.
Thank you, Dr. Craft. Okay, anyone else for items to be placed on the agenda? Okay, and of course, we have before the next committee meeting. All righty, superintendents' recommendations. Ms. Vouchet.
I think we've covered everything this evening, talked about all the performances that we're having this summer and the programs that we have for our students. Our administrators are going to be coming back and, well, they're here, they're still here, but in two weeks, we've got our week-long in-service with test results and planning for this coming school year. So we're right in the middle of planning for the opening of the new school year. So we've never stopped. Our teachers are doing professional development this summer. So really, summer is shorter and shorter and the planning process consumes the entire time. So it's exciting, I guess.
Thank you, Ms. Vouchet. Okay, is there a motion to adjourn? Is a motion by Mr. Campbell, seconded by Dr. Craft. All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.